Good morning, I would like to welcome you to the regular public workshop and regular meeting of the Henry County Board of Commissioners for 9:00 AM, Monday, August 2nd, 2010. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask for an acceptance of the agenda.
So move back.
Motion by Mr. Stamey.
Second.
Second by Mr. Holder, all in favor? Motion carries five zero. The first item under the agenda is on SPOST, and that's going to be an update on SPOST and non-SPOST capital projects. Our presenter is Ron Burkhalter, SPOST Capital Projects Director. Good morning.
Chairman, Commissioners, good morning. I'll start with Heritage Park. The LED sign at Heritage Park has been erected. The sign will be functional by the end of this week. This is the old jail that's out on a farm out on Highway 155 that we're going to move to Heritage Park. This is the old jail that sat on the square, and the schedule for moving it is on August 23rd, we'll be moving it into Heritage Park. At Richard Craig Tennis Center, some improvements that we've made there, is a new sign that you see on the building there. We put a metal roof on the building and gutters, new windows in the rear of the building, and as you see there, some new millwork on the inside. At Warren Holder Park, we put stairs in going up to the football fields, sidewalk, we fenced the football fields, and we're putting retaining wall in that goes around the kids' baseball This is the architect's rendering of a concession/stories that we're going to build at Warren Holder that's going to go in between the two football fields. These existing two soccer fields are going to be converted to football. North Mount Carmel, all 10 soccer fields have been graded, all the irrigation is in, all the storm drainage is in, and all 10 fields have been planted. As you can see, the concession is nearing completion. You still have the metal roof to put on it, some finishes to go on the inside. The completion here is contingent upon the grass grow in, but we anticipate grass growing in by October. We've been fortunate enough to have some good hot weather for Bermuda grass to grow At the Locust Grove Rec Center, the renovation starts today. After school has started, we're going to put a new athletic floor in the gym in the back or in the right-hand side there is going to be the exercise area, and again, the painting for the building started today. The Fairview Rec Center. The building is close to being 70% complete. You can see the curb and gutter going in. The estimated completion for this has been pushed back a couple, three weeks because of the rock, but the contractor has been working extended hours. Somewhere around the end of September to the 1st of October is our anticipated completion on it. At the Locust Grove Senior Activity Center, we're doing some minor modifications that will start the Tuesday after Labor Day due to some events being scheduled in the building. We're doing kitchen modifications for serving senior meals. We're doing minor modifications downtown for putting pool tables in, arts and crafts room sinks and some cabinetry we're going to put in the bottom. The estimated completion of this is mid-November. The E-911 Operations Center, this is the existing RV center that we're going to convert into the new E-911 Ops Center. This is the proposed facade that we're going to put on the building, still using the metal skin that's on the existing metal building. This is the floor plan of the building. All I wanted to illustrate here is, as you look at the slide, the left one-third of the building is for the day-to-day E-911 operations. The right-hand side of the building is an emergency management in case there's some catastrophic event in another county, okay? They would come down here and they'd work out of our facility, which has been a tremendous help with us as we put this budget together, and Don Ash has been able to get federal funds, okay, to help with the FF&amp;E of the furnishings that go in this building. This is the new fire station number nine, which will be located on Rock Quarry Road. This is the architecture rendering of the building. It's going to be a three-bay firehouse with the bunk room on the right-hand side you see there, and on the left-hand side will be the common area. This job will be going out to bid the second week of this month. The Fortson Library, except for some minor punch list items, the library staff is moving in today. They're starting to move into the new built, new facility. The, we've contracted out the moving of the books. The book moving will start tomorrow, and they anticipate five days to get all the books moved into the building, and we anticipate a ribbon cutting ceremony after working with the library board sometime in early September. Just an interior shot of all the furnishings that are in the library. The Haven House, we had a groundbreaking on the Haven House last Friday. The clearing and grubbing is complete. This is the architect's rendering of what the building is going to look like when it's And the completion on this building is May of 2011. Just showing an interior layout of the building where you have the one wing that is all administrative and the other two wings are living spaces. Judicial Center Parking Deck, the parking deck is complete. Items of work that remain to be done is landscaping that goes around the building and sidewalks down Lawrenceville Street and around the building, and we anticipate a ribbon cutting on the parking deck at the end of this month. The Stockbridge Police Precinct, we're partnering with the City of Stockbridge. This is converting, in the back of the picture there is the existing or the old City Hall, and the completion of this is March 2011. A non-SPOST project that we have going is the transit building. David Williamson was able to obtain funding through the FTA or the Federal Transit Administration for a 5,000-square-foot new transit facility that we're going to build between the E-911 Another non-SPOST or capital project that we have, again, David was able to secure some funding for a loop shop. It's a 3,800-square-foot pre-engineered building. The rectangle that you see there, in the top of the picture is the existing fleet. This is where we're going to build the new transit loop shop. At the Veterans Wall of Honor, we reworked the grand staircase and we added ADA sidewalks to take you down to the MIA POW Memorial. Any questions?
Any questions or comments from board members?
Comments, it's amazing that we have that many projects going on with the economy the way that it is, and I'm proud to see it.
Absolutely, and none of this would be possible without those SPOST dollars, so I'm glad our citizens can see progress being made with their extra penny sales tax. Thank you, Ron. The next item is an update on SPOST transportation projects. Our presenter is Rocky Ramirez, SPOST Transportation Director. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair and board members. Just a second, I'll get this up and running. There we go. We're going to provide an update after, like you mentioned, of the SPOST transportation projects. The first thing I would like to mention is, since SPOST 2, we have paved 34 roads. Thirty of these roads have been their roads. Overall, we have improved and paved 41.3 miles of roads. Where we at on Radaway, we're still acquiring Radaway on Race Dragon 81, Harris Drive at Stairway 42, Rockaway Road Bridge over railroad tracks, Mackey Road, Stafford Road, Oakland Road, and Ferby Road at Stairway 155. Projects in design, Camper Ground Road Extension, Rockaway Road Bridge over the railroad tracks, Ferby Road and Amble Block, East Atlanta Road at Thurman, Hemp Hill Road at Stairway 138, and all Highway 3 at Stairway 81. Projects, we got one project I'll forbid, that's South Bethany Road from Cohen Road to Philadelphia Road. The bid opening date is August 18th. So far, we have completed eight projects. Those are on this year fiscal year, or this year, 2010. East Lake at Phase 2, Airline Road at Stairway 20, Bethany Road at Stairway 81, All Conyers Road at Flat Rock Road, Foster Drive Bridge, Collins Way, South Bethany Road from Jackson Street to Price Drive, and Peaksville Road at South Ola Signalization Project. And for a grand total of construction of $15.8 million, and a total project of 23.3 that includes design, Radaway, and construction. Cohen Projects that are in construction are Eagles Landing, Hudson Bridge, McDonough Parkway, which is almost completed, Kiss Ferry Road at 81, King Mill Road at Stairway 42, East Atlanta Bridge, Collins Drive, Pulling Road, Rocky Creek Road at Hampton Locust Grove, Simpson Mill, East Atlanta Road at Panola, and the cul-de-sac at Leland Cypress Lane, which is part of the East Atlanta and Panola Road. Plus, we've started the surfacing program with Henry County DOT, and I believe they already finished one project, which is the Flipping Road. Quickly, I want to show you some pictures where we were four months ago and where we at now. This is a picture of Eagles Landing four months ago. This is the bridge at the Pace Creek. This is where we at now. All the substructure is completed. We're working on the superstructure. So here pretty soon we'll be starting point the concrete decks. This is another view where you can see the field has been brought up and GAB or rock has been installed. This is a view on Stairway 42 where we have started putting down, placing the GAB. The widening on 42 is necessary because we're going to have two lanes, dual lanes, left turn lanes for coming from 42 towards Eagles Landing. This is the bridge over the railroad tracks on Eagles Landing. You can see here the beams being brought up, placing of the first beam. Here we got four beams set. Contractor had to wait for that train to go by. We can't do any construction while the trains are coming by. This is East Lake four months ago, if you remember this picture. This is East Lake now. We just had the ground opening last Friday. My understanding, there's a lot of traffic on it since then. This is another view of East Lake. This is East Lake at Stairway 155 four months ago. This is how it looks now. This is another view. Still East Lake. This is Hudson Bridge Road four months ago. Now you can see we have placed GAB and also curb and gutter, and the drainage structures are in place also. You can see where we have installed, contractor has built a wall, retaining wall, in order to accommodate for the extra lanes on Flipping. That's just another view of Hudson Bridge. This is McDonough Parkway four months ago. This is McDonough Parkway now. This project is basically completed. That's the bridge before, that's how it looks now. We just need to do some striping and some cleanup, and we should be ready to open by sometime this month. That's another view. This is Stairway 81 at Bethany four months ago. This project is completed and operational. We've installed it left turn and right turn lanes in all quadrants. This next picture is Stairway 81 at Kiss Ferry. That was four months ago. Now you can see we have included widening, placed GAB, and if you can see, the concrete and steel poles for the signals have been installed. My understanding, we're going to be paving this week for the intersection. That's King Mill 42 four months ago. That's King Mill now. The grading's been, it's 90% completed and GAB, placement of GAB started. That's another view of King Mill. This is All Conyers and Flat Rock four months ago. This is how it looks today. We have that intersection improvement, the signal operation last Thursday, and we did the ribbon cutting on Friday. That's another view. Of course, the bears are not there now. This is the East Atlanta Bridge, how it used to look. This is during the construction of that temporary bridge. This is just before we turned traffic into the temporary bridge. There's traffic now on, it's been, since mid-July, that's when we opened the new temporary bridge for construction of the new one. And on the new bridge, they have already poured the first casing last Friday also, so they're moving along pretty good. This Collins Drive, grading continues on that job. This is Pulling Road four months ago. That's Pulling Road now. A lot of the GAB is being placed and curb and gutter also. Contractor had to pull out for a while because of utility conflicts, but they're back working. This is Simpson Mill Road. They're still working and grading on that job. This is South Bethany, from Price to, from Jackson Street to Price Drive four months ago. That's how it looks now. We just opened, we paved the road early in July. That's another view. Right there's a view on the entrance of the Senior Activity Center and the Holder Park entrance also. So the road provides access to both facilities. This is all East Atlanta at Panola. You can see where the road is going to be relocated. You can see in the far back the entrance of the subdivision. Grading continues on that job. This is the cul-de-sac that, at Leland Cypress Lane at West Panola End, where our staff engineer Shay did the design and Kenny DOT is doing the construction. This is the signalization that was awarded about two months ago for Peaksville at South Ola, and the contractor built a project in the timeframe and was ready last Wednesday before school opens. This is the picture of the Rocky Creek at Hampton Locust Grove Road. Contract was awarded in the previous meeting. Notice to proceed is going to be next Monday, August 8th. And that's my presentation. Any questions?
Very good presentation. Again, that just highlights the importance of the SPOST program here in Henry County. None of those projects would be under construction or completed in the absence of that one penny sales tax, so the voters are to be commended on having enough foresight and vision to approve that in 2007. Any board member with a question or comment? Mr. Bowman?
I got some comments. Rocky, the East Lake Extension, I was there, through there on Sunday morning and Sunday evening, and there was 20, 25 cars both times. I mean, it was really packed for the ones that haven't been down it. It's, the road's out and they're using it, I mean, and it's flowing very smoothly, so... And the only other thing, Madam Chair, is I think $61 million, would that not be a record spend for Henry County for transportation? Is that getting pretty close, Warren? I guess you're the...
We know they've had $61 million.
For us to have that type of work going on, especially in these times, and I know it's generated generally SPOST funding, it's a tremendous amount of work, and I tell you, I'm very proud of our SPOST department, the roads and our capital improvements, because it seems like you guys are on top of it and things are running very smoothly. Just like to congratulate you on that. I think you're doing a great job.
Thank you, sir. We do have a great staff and great support from the board also. Appreciate that.
Madam Chair, any update or information on 81 Lake Dow?
Oh, yeah, I certainly have no pictures on that one, but it's GDOT awarded the project this past July. Construction, they're going to give the notice to proceed mid-August, so construction should start late August, 1st of September for CW Matthews to do the work.
CW Matthews is a contractor, correct?
Yes, and it's already been awarded. GDOT already did that.
Couple of comments, first being thank you for the signal at South Ola and Peaksville. As we know, school started today, and it was much needed. I know with the ribbon cutting the other day, people would come by blowing the horn and waving thank you, you know, that kind of thing. So it was much needed, and I want to commend the SPOST department, and also, I think DOT had some input into that as well as the contractor, to make it happen in a timely manner to where when school started today that it would be working. This morning, DOT had a staff member there looking at it to check it, to see if everything was working properly, and he said it was doing fine. The other thing, and this is just a reminder, on King Mill in 42, and Mike Bush follow-up on this, if we haven't received the $200,000 contribution from Whirlpool to make that happen, we need to remind them that that one is about to come, to be complete, and that we need our money, because that was one of the agreements from them, to make that contribution because of the impact that it was going to put on that intersection. So be sure, we don't want to let that, that's a little bit too big to let slide. Thank you again for the projects, and I'm talking about county-wide projects, and Commissioner Bowman is exactly right, to have this amount of projects, and when you combine the capital projects that Mr. Burkhalter has shown us, along with the road projects, and for people, we're here to be criticized, there's no question about it. People are going to criticize because we didn't get, I didn't get my road or my building or whatever, and it's to be expected. But when you see the projects that have just been shown to us, and you see that they are basically scattered throughout the county, not in one area, it may not be what everybody wants, but I don't believe anybody can say we're doing nothing. So I just wanted to make that comment, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman. Any other question or comment? Thank you, Rocky.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is under Public Works, an update on county transportation projects. Our presenter is Terry McMichael, Public Works Division Director. Good morning.
Well, again, they have all the money, so I'll have to come up here with just a few projects. The first project we've got going on is one that's been around for a while. We are now at North Cleveland Church Road. We will be paving that. This week, we're almost through grading. We'll probably start fine grading or blue topping, putting down GAB next week, and then following, probably within two to three weeks, we'll be placing the pavement on that road. We completed a pipe replacement project in Windsong today. We'll be moving over to White Castle, Commissioner Basil, which is off of Thurman. You were asking me about that the other day, so they'll probably be moving in there today. Rocky had shown earlier where we built a little Hammerhead cul-de-sac, there for SPOST project on Leland Cypress, which is part of the East Atlanta Panola project. As we promised those citizens, we would have that in. We will probably get some concrete work started this week on Richard Craig Park. We're in a joint project with, I believe that's SPOST and the City of McDonough, paving a parking lot there for the, next to the tennis courts. Our concrete work should start in there sometime this week, and then we'll be paving the parking lot shortly thereafter. Another dirt road project on the south of McDonough is on Higgins Road. The surveyor is, should be in there today or tomorrow. To do that, when the surveyor collects all the property PIN data and all the right-of-way, we'll tweak our alignment to try to make minimum impact, and as soon as we do that, as soon as we get through with North Cleveland, Church Road will be moving to Higgins. In addition, we have a major pipe replacement project on Fairview Road, which will require us to put a little run-around road in in order to replace the pipes on Fairview, it's two large pipes. We'll have to dig the road entirely up, so we currently have two pipes off to the side. We'll build a run-around road around that location, much like Rocky did on his bridge project. The precast box culverts are to come in in September the 20th, so on August the 20th, we're going to start preparing and switch traffic over on that little run-around road, dig out the other pipes and be prepared, so when they come in on September the 20th, we'll be ready to set them. One other project that we're doing that's kind of a joint venture project is on Tussle Hall. Rocky is, again, paving Collins Drive, drive, behind Collins Drive all the way to the Cuba Hachi Learning Center. We'll be working with Henry County Water and Sewer Authority on paving that road, as well as doing a little bit of paving in there. We're going to try to get our paving done ahead of them, so our pavement, our asphalt trucks won't run on that new asphalt that they do. So Mr. Barclay is down there working with them. He'll be taking the motor grader down there, shaping that road up for paving next week, and hopefully, maybe the week after that, if we have it ready, we'll be moving in there. In addition, just very quickly, we have our pipe replacement program really in full swing now. We're finding a lot of pipes that need to be replaced, but we are currently somehow or another managing to stay up with those, although that's going to be a kind of a stretch in the future for us to do that. So we'll be coming to the board with some recommendations on that. In addition, as Rocky mentioned, we have our paving plan for this year in operation. I think they've already paved Flipping and Red Oak. We'll be continuing that, I believe, in August. Next meeting, we'll be presenting that, middle of August. You'll see a spreadsheet showing all the roads that we'll be paving this year and the cost associated with them, and how we've got that set up a little different than what we've been doing, but I think the board will appreciate how we've been doing that. We have some full-depth reclamation in that, where we've actually found on some of our roads, it's by far cheaper to do full-depth reclamation instead of patching those roads. Feel like we'll get a much longer surface or better riding surface, and the pavement will certainly last a lot longer by doing that. Feel like we've had pretty good success with that, and on three roads that we've been a part of, we've had Thurman was done that way and paved, and Hearn, as well as a section of Airlines. So we'll be using that same process on some of our roads this year. We're preparing a contract, hopefully, that'll go out this month. We'd like to see that full-depth reclamation start on some of these subdivisions and other roads in September and October, and November, try to get most of that done. We're going to do it in two contracts, because we're going to be following right behind them as they do that reclamation. So we'll be doing one in fall and one in spring. But our paving goal this year is to get 30 miles. And that'll conclude my presentation. And that'll conclude my presentation, unless any of the board members have any questions.
Terry, I know you hate following the SPOST presentation, but just to say, your department has, it, it probably doesn't get the, the attention and coverage that, that SPOST gets, but your department is responsible for all the maintenance and all the upkeep of all the roads, including the ones that are done under SPOST, and, you know, we certainly want to thank your department for doing a, a good job of keeping up with all that, it's challenging, especially with the number of dirt roads we have in the county, to continue maintaining those, and, of course, as you discussed, the fact that we have a number of culverts and things like that, they're gonna need replacing in the future, as they've got quite a few years on them, and, but you, your, your department does an excellent job, and, and we certainly appreciate all that you do to keep our roads in good shape.
Well, as Rocky said, we have an excellent staff as well, that a lot of our folks have been around for a long, long time, and they do a good job, and, and of course, it wouldn't be possible, you know, to do what we do without them, but they do a great job. Thank you.
Mr. Bowman had a question?
Well, it's more of a comment, I know that I had several, Terry and I had been out several times and looked at various issues around Miller's Mill Road, I, I would say was one of them, and I'd like to thank Terry for his response and the way that he's responded to them, and I know we had a few humps and bumps, and we went back and cut those down, and, and I can understand how, when you're paving, sometimes you just pave and you go, go across it, but some other issues that have came up, and Terry's been very, very quick to respond, his response to time's been good, and I want to issue the same thanks to him and his department that we do with the SPOST department, because it has been, I know for me personally, I can't speak for the other commissioners, but whenever I call Terry and say, can you meet me at such and such a time, if he's got the time to do it, he can, if not, he tells me when he can, and he's there, and then he responds to that issue whenever we do it, so, once again, it's just another good department that is, is doing great work.
Anybody else?
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Holder?
I'd like to echo what Commissioner Bowman said, and, and add a couple of things, and the fact that, when you look at the entire budget, and you see what the, the percentage of the total budget is allocated to transportation, and you see the things that he's talking about doing, and paving thirty miles, and replacing culverts, and replacing pipes, and maintaining the roads, and if anybody needs help from other departments for mowing and different other things, who do they call on? They call on DOT. And in many cases over the years, it's cost us in time actually maintaining and taking care of the roads, so, my hat's off, I know there've been some problems that I've talked to Terry about as far as personnel, and, and he has addressed those issues to my satisfaction, maybe not to everyone's, but to mine, and I want to say thank you, on, on behalf of the board, I'm, myself specifically, that you are in a somewhat of a thankless position, because people expect, or take for granted, that, that this maintenance is gonna occur, this pothole is gonna be fixed, this pipe, this drainage pipe is gonna be opened, when in fact, if the money and the personnel is not there, it's not gonna happen. Another thing, and this is just a thought, and I'd like to, to pass this along, and we've spoken about it before, and he touched on it with, with piping, and with various drainage structures and drainage problems, as much pipe as, as this county has put in, either through subdivision curb and gutters, from lateral, and I hope I'm using the right term, lateral pipes along ditches, over the past twenty years, and some of these are starting to see their life expectancy come up, we're gonna have to look at alternative funding, and I certainly hope that we will look at it, and, and I think we all think that, that stormwater should play a part in some of this, and I think it's important, because if we don't start preparing now, in the next twenty to thirty years, it's gonna, the, the cost of, of replacing all this pipe is going to break the bank, and I just really wanted to say thank you, Terry, and I want to make one correction to your presentation. Collins Drive in Cuba Hachi is not on Tussle Hall, it's on, but, thank you so much.
Stane, correct.
Mr. Holder, I'll follow up on, on the comment, I had asked Terry last week if he would put together a long-term plan for the county, coming back on the heels of a, a meeting at ARC two weeks ago, where we talked about the crisis that GDOT is in with its maintenance program, and the amount of money that's coming in through the gas tax, and the fact that about eighty percent of their budget going forward in the future is gonna have to be committed just to maintenance of our roads, which leads very little money for any type of system improvements, and knowing that GDOT's having these issues, as we stand right now, that's something that we do need to look at as a county going forward with all these new projects, especially coming online, there's going to be maintenance associated with them twenty, thirty years down the road, so now is the time to start preparing a plan for that, and Terry's going to take a good look at that, come with a comprehensive plan, one that includes not only asphalt and culvert replacement, but also equipment replacement and things like that, so it's something our board can start looking at, and put a plan together, so we don't saddle that issue with a board ten or fifteen years down the road to have to scramble to find funds to keep up our system, so, hopefully, we'll be seeing that in the next couple of months, and we can start giving that some serious thought.
We will.
Thank you. Mr. Basler?
Terry, on the Fairview culvert there, what is the time, where are we at with that?
The pre-cast will be ready to ship to us on September the twentieth, we will come probably on August the twentieth, that weekend of August the twentieth, we will, that day, close a section of Fairview down and put a detour in while we shift, make those tie-ins on that run-around road, so, we'll put the traffic on the detour, say, on August the twenty-first, the pipes, the pre-cast box culvert, we're gonna do that as a pre-cast, it comes in September the twentieth, I would say it'll probably take us about a week to lay them and backfill, and then we'll have to pave the road back, so, probably about two weeks after that, we'll be ready to open the road back up.
Okay, well, I sure appreciate that, and, and what was on Leland, Leland Cypress over there, with that Hammerhead for the citizens who live in Twin Oaks, I think that was a major deal because of the concern for the citizens there, the cut-through it would been, but I sure appreciate all you do.
Yes, sir.
Thanks, sir.
Moving on in the agenda, thank you, Terry, the next item is gonna be under Finance, a budget update, our presenter is Mike Bush, Finance Director, and I believe you have an exhibit laying before you. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Board. This is our revenue report for the month of May, June has ended, and, and normally in this time period, we would be talking about our June, but June is the last year of the month, and bills that come in, like the power bill for June, won't be paid till July, so we can't really report on June until we have a chance to close it out for the end of the year, so we're gonna show you May's today. As far as the revenues go, we are, we collected four million, seven hundred fifty-four thousand, one hundred and five dollars in May, last year, we collected a little bit more than that in May, for the year, we have collected one hundred and sixteen million, one hundred thirty-four thousand, one hundred and twenty-nine dollars, and same period last year, we were at one hundred and twelve million, five hundred eighty-five thousand, two hundred and seventy-nine dollars. Basically, for the year, we should have collected, or generated ninety-one percent of the revenues, we've actually generated ninety-two, same point last year was eighty-seven percent, and we will need to collect ten million, five hundred fifty-three thousand in June to generate the one hundred and twenty-six million dollar budget. I don't expect us to collect ten million dollars in June, but when I show you the expenditures, you'll see that it's gonna be okay. For the expenditures, for the month, we've spent nine million, eight hundred and eight thousand, five hundred twenty-two thousand, for the year, for those eleven months, we've averaged spending ten million a year, or ten million a month, and, so for the year, we've spent one hundred and sixteen million, one hundred and thirty thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars, I'm sorry, that's the budget, the actual, we've actually spent one hundred and ten million, five hundred fifty-four thousand, five hundred and ninety-one dollars, so we've got sixteen million dollars left to, for, you know, if we spent the whole sixteen million, one hundred and thirty-three thousand, forty-six dollars in the month of June, then we would match our budget, but we're averaging ten million a month, so I don't think we're gonna hit the one hundred and twenty-six million here either, so which, that's a good thing, we're gonna, we're revenues, expenditures are gonna be close, we're gonna fall a little short on the revenues, which we budgeted seven million dollars of fund balance, and this year, I do not believe we will use seven million dollars of fund balance, I believe we'll use less than that, because of the, the instituting, the, you know, only spending money that's absolutely necessary to spend, trying to control spending, and also, you know, we've seen a little bit of an increase in our local option sales tax, I think for the year, we're averaging about a three percent increase over last year, same thing on our SPOST dollars, and, which brings me to the final sheet that I have, it's talking about our SPOST dollars. For the month of June, we collected two point, two point four million dollars, which brings us to fifty-eight million, three hundred and sixty-eight thousand, one hundred and one dollars, on, against a budget of sixty-two, seven fifty, which, we're at ninety-three point two percent, just six months ago, we were at ninety-two percent, so we've made a full percent up in six months, and we expect, again, like I said, we're averaging a three percent increase in this calendar year over last calendar year, which, if we maintain that type of an increase, we will definitely surpass our one hundred and eighty million dollar budget that we've got, but again, it, it, you know, even in the hard times that we're in right now, we managed to pick up a full percentage point in the last six months on our, on our special purpose local option sales tax. I'll be glad to answer any questions, if any of you have any.
Any questions or comments? Mr. Roark?
I guess about halfway up that list, June to July of last year, with the, where that has the big drop in the percentage, it looks like there's like a zero for that month?
Yes, sir, state of Georgia changed the way that they were reimbursing the counties, all the sales tax goes to the state, and then they give it back to the counties, well, they changed their way of giving the money back, or way of, of gathering the money and giving it back, there used to be a two-month delay in getting your money back, they have now got it to where it's a one-month delay, and what they basically said is that we've given you the money, and, and the money you got in May and June made up for one of those months, and that's why you see a zero collection on one of those months, that's why we went from ninety-eight percent to ninety-one percent, but they're still paying us for those time periods, because what happens is if somebody sends in their money, and it's different, the money they send in is different than the report, it has to go through an audit process, which means you may not get that mon, money for six months, so, although they say they're one month behind, it's really not completely one month behind.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. Bush.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is under Elections, resolution to provide for the calling of a special election for the purpose of submitting to the electors of Henry County for approval or rejection of an act, House Bill thirteen forty-seven, adopted by the General Assembly of the state of Georgia, and approved by the governor in the two thousand and ten session of the General Assembly, which act authorizes Henry County to exercise redevelopment powers conditioned upon voter approval. Our presenter is Janet Shellnut, Director of Elections, handout number one.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This resolution is basically derived from House Bill thirteen forty-seven, local legislation that passed the Senate and the House, the governor has signed it, we have gotten copies of it, now we're kinda dotting our i's and crossing our t's, it will be on a special referendum on the November ballot for exercising redevelopment powers, you can see the language is on Exhibit A, and basically, as Superintendent of Elections, I'm asking you to place it on the ballot, have your permission, then we'll send this to justice after, after today, so.
Any questions or comments from board members? This has to do with the TAB legislation, we had asked the General Assembly to allow to be placed on our ballot in November for our voters to decide whether or not they wanted Henry County to have the authority to do that, so if there's no questions, you have a resolution before you approving this, and I will entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Stamey, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Holder, all in favor? Motion carries five-zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, under Public Safety, a resolution requesting authorization to use seized asset and forfeiture funds to purchase physical fitness equipment for the department's health and wellness program, our presenter is Major Danny Butler of the Police Department, that's Exhibit number one. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chairman, Commissioners, the department would like authorization to use funds from the drug seized and forfeiture account to purchase physical fitness equipment for the health and wellness program.
Now, I did, I did speak with the county attorney, and this item is not required to be bid because it is used equipment, does any board member have a question or comment about this item?
Just a question.
Mr. Holder?
Major Butler, where will this equipment be located for the fitness program?
In our main building, we have a conference room that was used for the training division that we converted into a room to house all this.
Oh, with the complex?
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? If not, you have before you a resolution authorizing and approving the purchase of the physical fitness equipment for the police department, I'll entertain a motion.
So.
Motion by Mr. Basler, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bowman, all in favor? Motion carries five-zero. Thank you. Moving on to Social Services, a resolution requesting approval of the FY twenty-eleven Georgia Department of Transportation contract for fifty-three eleven, eleven Rural Transportation Operating Assistance Program, our presenter is David Williamson, Transit Director, Exhibit number two. Good morning.
Good morning. We do request approval of the two thousand and eleven contract between the Georgia Department of Transportation and the county for the rural transit program, just as a matter of information, this is our twenty-first year providing transportation for the citizens of Henry County, in the past five years, we've almost doubled our one-way passenger trips, as individuals that ride each day, and over that same period of time, we have had a sixty-three percent increase in our reimbursement from the, from the state for the rural transit program, the county would be eligible for reimbursement up to four hundred and six thousand, nine hundred and fourteen dollars, and assistance from the state, and the local match is four hundred and six thousand, nine hundred and thirteen dollars, which is in our departmental budget.
Any questions or comments pertaining to this item? If not, you have a resolution before you approving the contract with GDOT, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mr. Stamey, second by Mr. Bowman, all in favor? Motion carries five-zero.
Thank you.
Moving on to Building and Development Services, a resolution requesting approval of a streetlight district for Taylor's Landing at Spivey, our presenter is Bert Foster of the Building Department, and that's Exhibit number three. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chairman, members of the board, before you today is a streetlight request by the property owners of Taylor's Landing at Spivey, the requirements of the ordinance have been met, and staff recommends approval.
All right, this lies in District Two, and if there are no questions from board members, I'll entertain a motion on the request.
So.
Motion to approve by Mr. Roark, second by Mr. Stamey, all in favor? Motion carries five-zero.
Thank you.
Moving on to SPOST, the first item is a resolution requesting award of a bid for copy services for construction plans and specifications, our presenter is Rocky Ramirez, SPOST Transportation Projects Director, Exhibit number four.
Good morning, again, Madam Chair and board members, various county departments require copying services for construction plans and specifications, having a contract for copying services allows a quick access to these services and products without the necessity of bidding each time the service is required, the prices are guaranteed for a two-year contract period, sealed bids were solicited for the copying service, three sealed bids were received and reviewed, staff recommends the low bidder, LDI of McDonough, funding for copy services is available in each individual account, I will take any questions at this time.
Does any board member have a question or comment pertaining to this item? All right, if not, I would like to mention for the record that Mr. Bowman will be recusing himself from this vote as LDI rents a space in one of his commercial buildings, and with that being said, you have a resolution before you awarding the bid to LDI, and I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mr. Stamey, second by Mr. Holder, all in favor? Motion carries four-zero. You also have the next item on the agenda, which is a resolution requesting approval of an agreement for professional engineering services for bridge culvert inspection and repair details and design for Flippin' Road at Pates Creek Bridge, and that's Exhibit number five.
This, Flippin' Road at Pates Creek Bridge is designated SPOST three transportation project, this culvert is in need of a repair, one of the- One of the wings of the culvert has completely separated from the box, so there's a, the need for an inspection and a repair for design. An agreement was received and reviewed from Hidden Lineback, and the staff recommends approval of this agreement in the amount of $33,180. And funding is, for these services, is available within the project budget.
Any board member have a question or comment pertaining to this item? If not, this lies in District Two, and I'll look to you, Mr. Roark, for approval of the resolution.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Roark, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Stamey, all in favor? Motion carries five zero. The next item is a resolution requesting a ward of a bid for installation of trees along McDonough Parkway Extension. Again, this is Rocky Romero is our presenter, Exhibit Number Six.
McDonough Parkway Extension is a designated SPOLOST III transportation project. Seal bids were solicited for the installation of the Leland Cypress trees and lollaply pine trees along McDonough Parkway Extension. We received 10 seal bids, and we reviewed them. Staff recommends the low bidder, Rockland Contracting, LLC, from Conyers in the amount of $12,380. Funding is available within the project.
Are there any questions or comments regarding this item?
Madam Chairman, comment?
Mr. Holder?
My question is, why would you use lob lolly pines for, what's the purpose in, I mean, obviously, Leland is a buffer tree.
I guess to give a different contrast in the buffer.
Aesthetics, we're talking about aesthetics here.
Aesthetics, yes, aesthetics.
But a lob lolly pine, there's nothing, it'll just be a tree. If it's any color, it's going to be at the top if you're talking about it. Anyhow, I don't know what the purpose in the lob lolly is. We know what a Leland will do. I mean, it's just common sense.
I think what we're doing, Commissioner Holder, is this is an area that had a buffer area that was opened up when we put in the new parkway, and to protect the homeowners in Autumn Lake subdivision, we were required to go back, they requested us to do this, and we agreed to it. We actually talked about several different types of buffers, but they wanted two layers, and we're putting the Lelands in front and the pines behind us. Because there's a lot of pines that we took out down through there, but that's kind of what, they came to terms with us, wanting us to put in there.
That's fine, but you're not going to get any buffering from lob lolly pine.
Well, we'll have the Lelands in front of them.
That's fine. Just a question.
Well, maybe the hope was that the pine straw would help keep the weeds down as the pines got larger.
Well, Leland, we could say that.
Mr. Stamey, did you have another comment?
No. Rocky, I know we had talked about this, and we, you know, had several bidders on it, but can we push that there's a maintenance agreement in here too?
Correct.
When, in August? Can we wait 60 days before we put this in the ground at where we can probably do away with some of the maintenance part of it, because it'll be a much cooler environment?
I don't know. If we awarded, I don't know if we're awarded now, I don't think we can, can we wait? The question I'm asking is, can we?
We can award it today, just postpone the starting date?
We can issue the notice to proceed any time after you do the award, so we can hold off on issuing the notice to proceed.
Okay, so we'll give notice to proceed, we'll let them know that they received the award, but of course, if it's awarded, and we'll provide, October?
That's better. I just don't think they had much of a fighting chance if you put them in the ground in August.
It's too hot now, yeah.
Even though they do come with a guarantee, I think it'd be better in August.
They did, they had a guarantee.
If there are no further questions from the board, there's a resolution before you approving the ward of the bid to Rockland Contracting. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Having a motion to approve by Mr. Stamey, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Roark, all in favor? Motion carries five zero. The next item is a resolution requesting approval of a supplemental agreement for roundabout lighting design for the intersection improvement of State Route 155 at Fairview Road. Again, Mr. Rocky Romero is our presenter, Exhibit Number Seven.
Stairway 155 at Fairview Road is a designated SPOLOST II transportation project. Georgia Department of Transportation has required that a lighting light be installed at the proposed roundabout. Staff has requested approval, staff is requesting approval of this supplemental agreement in the amount of $2,400 for the lighting design, and funding is available in the budget.
Any board member have a question or comment pertaining to this item?
Okay.
Mr. Holder?
I promise you it'll be quick. I'm sure GDOT designed this roundabout, is that correct?
We actually, URS is doing the design, URS is doing the design for us, the county, but GDOT is going to be the one building, paying for the construction of this project. So it's going through the GDOT process.
A concern that I would have in, with a roundabout, and especially on a state route such as this, is that the races in this roundabout accommodate 53-foot tractor trailers and things that are going to have to maneuver that thing, and it's going to be quite a circle.
And it will.
And I'm sure the engineers will take that into consideration, but it's something that's going, certainly need to be considered.
Yeah, it's going to be a little bit different from the, of course, you know, the roundabout that we have on Unity Grove, but this is going to be different. It's going to have a concrete layer in there for trucks to go around, so you're going to have a center that is going to be grass, just like Unity Grove, but then you're going to have an outer, like an outer perimeter of it that is going to be concrete, so the trucks are basically going to be able to run over that concrete. They just, GDOT just finished one on Stairway One, 341.
In Monroe County.
Monroe County. I just.
That's the one I was referring to.
And that one has, if you look at it, it's got that concrete.
Before they design it completely, they need to go down and look and see how much concrete's broken where trucks are not maneuvering that circle, and that is exactly the reason for my comment, is that we need to get it right, and obviously, they need to look at the one in Monroe County. Because I don't think with log trucks and any kind of large truck, that they're making the turn and they're breaking curves. Anyhow, just a thought.
Okay, we'll check on it.
Mr. Vassler?
Just a little comment from Commissioner Holder. We had met with Georgia DOT several times on this project. You know, they had told the citizens that we'd get a light during SPOLOST II. They came back, and they have changed their mind, and, but in doing that, what they're doing, they're paying for the construction of it, so it did save the taxpayers' money of the county of not doing that, and that was some of the questions that I had. But I think it is Highway Five and 166 is the interchange out in Douglas County that is, it's beating, and it's a lot of truck traffic that has, that has worked fine, worked fine. Yeah, and there was a lot of citizens that was apprehensive about it.
It's designed.
Right. And I think that's something that we need to stay on top of. If we don't feel like something is going like we need it, like needs to be there, we need to, it needs to be brought to our attention so we can.
The Monroe County one was brought to my attention, and I had seen it, and that's why I'm saying it needs to be addressed now rather than later.
Rocky, if you wouldn't mind, and keep me apprised on what, how that goes. I do have a question about the light. Is it one center light in the middle that's a downward light on?
That's correct.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Any other questions or comments? If not, you have before you a resolution approving the supplemental agreement for the roundabout lighting design, and Mr. Vassler, I'll look to you for a motion.
So moved.
Can we have a motion to approve by Mr. Vassler, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Holder, all in favor? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to the approval of the minutes, we're going to take these separately. We're going to first of all take May the 27th, 28th, June 1st, and June the 22nd. There were some grammatical changes or errors in the May 28th on Page 13 that I will give to the clerk. Are there any other additions or corrections to be made to the minutes? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Holder, second by Mr. Bowman, all in favor? Motion carries five zero. The June 24th meeting, Mr. Bowman was absent for that. Are there any additions or corrections to these minutes? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mr. Roark, second by Mr. Stamey, all in favor? Motion carries four zero. We had no one sign up for public comment this morning. Mr. County Manager, any comments for public session?
I just have one comment to make. You'll notice when Major Butler was here about the purchase of the exercise equipment. Fitness and wellness is an issue that you are going to hear more of. We have had a $25,000 pool of money available from Blue Cross Blue Shield, which we are going to utilize in this budget year to emphasize fitness and wellness. It's an area that not only benefits individual employees, but it certainly has a long-term impact on our expenses and our group health insurance. That's been proven across the board. And I commend Keith Nichols for starting the program there. We are going to be putting together a countywide committee to utilize those funds the best way that we can, see what our workforce is interested in doing to work on wellness, and I think it will have a long-term positive impact on productivity and cost savings. So you will hear more about that issue as time goes on.
Thank you. Ms. County Attorney, anything for public session? No, ma'am. At this time, because we have covered all agenda items for today and tomorrow, I need a motion to cancel tomorrow's meeting.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Holder, second by Mr. Stamey, all in favor? Motion carries five zero. The upcoming meetings will be Monday, August 16th at 9:00 a.m., and Tuesday, August 17th at 6:30 p.m. These are both regular board meetings. Friday, September 3rd is a county furlough day. All county offices will be closed. Monday, September 6th, there will be no meeting. It's a Labor Day holiday. All county offices will be closed. Tuesday, September 7th at 9:00 a.m., this is the workshop meeting of the board. I'm sorry, that's a regular board meeting. At this time, I need a motion to convene into executive session for the purposes of potential pending litigation, personnel matters, or land acquisition.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Stamey, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Vassler, all in favor? Motion carries five zero. At this time, I need a motion for approval of an affidavit and resolution pertaining to executive session.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Stamey, second by Mr. Holder, all in favor? Motion carries five zero. At this time, we need to amend the agenda out of public necessity. Mr. Bowman?
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to approve an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Stockbridge to acquire 1.65 acres of land located on Rock Quarry Road for the purpose of constructing a fire station, a SPOLOST III project, and authorize the chairman to execute any and all documents pertaining thereto with one change, and that's the start date of actual construction to be November 1 of 2010.
And we have a motion by Mr. Bowman, and second by Mr. Stamey, all in favor? Motion carries five zero. We also need to amend the agenda out of public necessity. Mr. Stamey?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve a right-of-way entry agreement with Archland Properties One, LLC for property located Highway 801 Highway 81 East, McDonough, Georgia, to authorize the chairman to execute all necessary documents.
I have a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Roark, all in favor? Motion carries five zero. If there's no further business to come before this board, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Roark, second by Mr. Vassler, all in favor? Motion carries five zero. We stand adjourned.